Ross, you ready to go?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commission. We're here in front of you tonight for the Unified Development Code, round three of housekeeping amendments. This set of amendments should be pretty easy. It's a lot of clarifications and just edits that need to be made, you know, in a 600-page document, dropping down from 1,100 and from the version that was adopted back in December. We've had a few corrections to make. And it went live on August 2nd. And, you know, we're getting a lot of good feedbacks, which is great. So this set of amendments should be pretty easy. But we'll have our consultant go through them with y'all. And if you have any questions, please let me know. And be ready for round four amendments next month. So I'm just putting that in your brain.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilor Commission. It's good to see everyone. Alex Carter with Desireline. As Ross mentioned, we're kind of walking through your items today. This is, you know, I think it was originally item nine, so y'all ignore this. We pulled it forward as a special meeting. For those of y'all, just as a refresher, we're going to talk a little bit about the UDC, a little bit about the context within these amendments, the process, describe a summary of the changes that are in this housekeeping number three, and then, you know, discuss any questions or comment y'all may have or the public may have. As discussed, and this is also in your staff report, the history of this is sort of summarized here. You can see here that, you know, the parish has gone through extensive amount of work to update the comprehensive code, you know, to extend the date, to make sure there was time to prepare for its effective date. Y'all have worked hard to approve and review the first two housekeeping amendments, which were recently approved by the council on July 11th. And as Ross mentioned, the council, you know, this has approved the UDC, which became effective really, you know, last Friday. So it's still very fresh. And as Ross mentioned, you know, these housekeeping amendments really just incorporate additional corrections or references within the UDC itself. It reflects meetings with parish council and stakeholders, really to discuss comments, find resolutions, support consensus on changes. You can see here the pieces that are highlighted in the UDC timeline are these housekeeping amendments in particular. I think the parish has done a nice job not just doing these all at once. A lot of times, communities will process like 400 amendments in a meeting and then call it a day. And everybody kind of walks away bleary-eyed, not sure what they just approved. And y'all are sort of taking this one step at a time, being very deliberate in your decision-making. And you can see that, you know, in March, y'all reviewed Housekeeping One. In May, you reviewed Housekeeping Two. And now in August today, y'all are looking at Housekeeping Three. And they're speeding up, right? So I think we're getting in a groove, seeing these errors, getting them processed through the team. And just to acknowledge again, you know, why more amendments? I think this is, you know, the parish has been preparing for this effective date. It's becoming more and more familiar. It is sometimes difficult for parish staff to pick up a 600-page document if they're not sure it's going to be approved, right? There's an element of like, I'll read that once I know for sure. I've got to follow those rules. And so as more parish staff are using it, we're seeing little things here and there that we just need to keep working through. We've also updated applications, procedures, and people are sort of shifting the way they operate. And so that kind of, you know, prompts amendments and changes. And this just kind of reflects this iterative process, right? This isn't something that we do all in one day. We do it over time, and we make sure everybody knows what's going on. It's very transparent. Does anybody have questions about the history or previous housekeeping studies or anything that we've talked about so far? Okay, great. So if y'all look to your staff report in Appendix A to this kind of effect of being kind of really transparent, you can see the proposed changes in Housekeeping Three, where blue and bold text is new text. Any text that is read and struck through is recommended as being deleted. What we've done in this staff report is we've sort of grouped changes that are similar together so y'all can kind of think about them a little bit more in globbo instead of sort of bouncing all around. And so you'll see the first sort of group of amendments that are in your staff report. They deal more with policy. They deal kind of with clarifying policy within the code, and I'm going to kind of flip to it. But ultimately, this deals with enhancing requirements for public utility sites that are near residential developments, streamlining and clarifying standards for non-conforming substandard lots, and updating some billboard sign regulations that we previously brought to the Planning Commission. And there were some questions and feedback, and we knew we would have to come back and refine it. So we're back today with those updated standards. The, a lot of what this Housekeeping Four does is correct and clarify, as y'all can see here. In terms of corrections, you know, this is really reincorporating alternate members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Actually, as we process this report, the council actually adopted an emergency ordinance with, which amended this even further. So we're going to look at this specifically and make sure we're consistent with them. And we'll talk about that in a minute. Reincorporates permitted commercial excavation activities within the industrial, industrial two districts, subject to development plan review. This is something that was in the old code that we're bringing back. Reincorporates former Section 115-4. This is fill materials prohibited within 200 feet of the drainage waterway. This section on fill was kind of bouncing around in the code, and it just dropped off. There was not the intention for it to not be included. It reincorporates standards for monument and community bulletin board signs. These are sort of the signs that you see in the front of subdivisions. And removes references to the natural area requirements that are no longer applicable due to the implementation of major subdivision incentives. So as we went through, and we kind of tweaked the natural area requirements in the last edit, there was one piece that was still sort of a holdover in those two districts that we're just striking through. Removes hotels as a permitted use in the general commercial districts. This is the GC1 and GC2, as well as the HC1 highway commercial districts. This is also consistent with the old code. If you go back and look at those districts or the districts that are comparable, they're not permitted. And then it clarifies sort of these differences between single and two-family dwellings when more than one full indoor kitchen is constructed. Uses standards from, adds some use standards for mini warehouses, specifically, you know, that outdoor storage area cannot exceed or be equal or is limited, or, these symbols always throw me off, greater, less than or greater, less than or equal to 50% of the lot area. And so sort of things that, you know, staff are seeing as they're picking up applications and they're going, oh, you know what, this is something we do, or, you know, it's not here, where is it? And we're going, oh, you know, it should be in this spot. It clarifies UDC processes needed before a building permit can be issued. So we did some editing in 300. And then looks at accessory uses and decorative ponds. Make sure that they're clearly permitted in residential districts. Adds some standards for increased landscaping in the planned corridor district. And this was sort of a movement of an element. Clarifies the planning director has the authority to administratively approve minor modifications to a concept plan and final subdivision plat when all minimum criteria met. And then finally clarifies minor subdivision applications, review, and public hearing requirements and procedures. If y'all want, we can kind of walk through the summary of the recommendations. But you can kind of get in globbo that it's sort of, the policy pieces are first. And so if you look in your staff report, what you'll see is things are kind of numbered this way, where I feel like last time when we were bouncing around, there are some of these changes manifest in different recommendations, so it can be a little confusing. For the first change, you know, adding minimum standards to screen landscape and public utility sites when located in or adjacent to residential or commercial districts, this is going to be recommendation number five. So if you slide to page, let me see. This is going to be on page five of 13 in Appendix A. And what you'll see here is it looks like a lot of changes. A lot of this is incorporating the standards themselves as well as the reference to those standards within every one of the districts where they're applicable. So it looks like a lot of change, but it's really just making sure when public utility sites are constructed or substantially amended or come in for a permit, they're making improvements to make sure the streetscape looks nice for surrounding areas. Oh, we need a copy. You're like, I got it right on this. I mean, I could probably even pull it up on the screen to try to help flipping through. But you can see here in this, you know, really, it's the trigger is, you know, the standards are separated by existing sites that are not proposing to expand. They're maybe just coming in for a permit. You know, they've got to put up a fence. Existing sites that are proposing to expand, they have a little bit more requirements. And then new sites, you know, clearly, they have the most opportunity to make sure that there's a nice buffer, streetscape, landscaping, and so on. So you have those requirements in place. Any questions about public utility signs? No? Okay. All right.
I'm really concerned that so many of us didn't have this in our hands.
You know, Commissioner McInnes, it was emailed to you on 8/6 last week in addition to the packet for tonight. So both packets were emailed. And printed and mailed? There you go, and as well as emailed.
I don't, I mean, to be honest, I thought this meeting was going to be to train us on the new code. I was misunderstanding what the purpose of the meeting was.
Okay, well, it was emailed and provided as a hard copy.
Well, I will ask that you go slower because a lot of us are going, what?
I really appreciate that. Yeah, I can definitely slow down and make sure that we're kind of, you know...
You've been in this a long time.
A long time, exactly.
But we haven't been in it since the last...
Yeah, since May.
Well, yes.
Yes. Absolutely.
Please slow down, at least for me.
No problem whatsoever. Thank you so much for speaking up. And so I think where I'm at right now, y'all, is I'm just on, I'm looking at the proposed summary of changes, which are on page two of your report. And each one of these sort of groups of changes kind of references... It references the different recommendations that are in Appendix A. So you can kind of see the summary. And then if you want to refer to the specific text that's marked up, you just kind of refer to the number of that recommendation in the list. Okay? So we were just talking about this recommendation for additional standards for public utility sites, which are actually on page five of Appendix A. And it's recommendation number five. And I'll, just to kind of slow down, I'm just going to read the recommendations. So this is to amend Chapter 400 zoning, Section 400-8 use standards, to add minimum standards to screen and landscape public utility sites when located in or adjacent to residential or commercial zoning districts, and renumber and re-reference sections accordingly, right? So these are standards, you know, when someone comes in, I think right now they're limited in what they can do to really improve the look and feel of the streetscape. And public utility sites are necessary, right? We need our power poles and our electric utilities. But they don't have to look so out of place in residential districts. Any questions on this one? Take your time. The next policy change really streamlines, clarifies, and updates minimum requirements for the development of non-conforming substandard lots. We made amendments to this section before. They were, they're primarily located in recommendations number 10 and 17. So they affect chapters 500 and Chapter 800. So if we go to recommendation number 10, this is going to be on page 20 of Appendix A. It reads amend Chapter 500, Section 500-2-1, legal non-conforming lots to streamline, clarify, update, minimum requirements for the development of non-conforming substandard lots to read as follows. And you can see here, you know, working with engineering, the parish council, there's some clarifications here where substandard lots are not always residential lots, right? So there's some changes here from taking off the residential, which is struck through, and adding just primary structures. And then streamlining the minimum lot area width. Y'all may recall, the last time we brought these amendments to y'all, we were reincorporating them into the code. And as the parish council considered the reincorporation, they were like, well, why don't we make this better? Why don't we clarify, you know, that this is a hardship, that we need to make sure substandard lots are developable and under what conditions and how that determination is made? So we did work with the engineering department, the public works department, to streamline this section and further clarify how you develop a substandard lot. Okay? If you look at recommendation number 17, this is the other one that kind of deals the same way with this recommendation. It's on page, it's on page 30. And this also deals with these non-conforming subdivision regulations. And it's really just to be consistent with those changes to 500. You know, every time we tweak the code, we have to think about where else it references those standards. And so what you'll see, if you flip to page 31, you'll see, you know, that we're, again, sort of clarifying the text, referring to Chapter 500, and we're removing this reference to construction because Chapter 800 is for subdivisions, right? It's how you divide and, you know, subdivide land. It doesn't primarily use, deal with construction activities. So we move those standards into 500 where they belong and deal with, you know, how you reconstruct those lots. Okay? Any questions on this item?
Last couple of meetings, we've had some lots come up. I don't know if they'd be considered substandard, but their particular location is in the actual circular part of a traffic circle. So we want to, my opinion is we should try to prevent people from creating entrances or exits to businesses inside of the turning radius of the traffic circle. I don't know if you're addressing that in the, in this particular section or if there's another section that you're addressing traffic circles.
Yeah, the...
We have a lot of them now.
Right, yeah. The OCD loves their traffic circles.
Yes.
We all pull our hair out 10 years, 20 years later.
You know, and since people are still confusing, you know, a little bit confused sometimes about how to utilize them, I don't think that somebody stopping and trying to turn into a business in the middle of a turn is probably a good idea.
Right, and that, I think, one of the things that, you know, you've got to make sure you're doing in these legal lots of record, these substandard lots of record is for, you've got to be able to provide plumbing, water, sewer, meet lot requirements. You've got to still meet, you know, the building standards. So even though these standards sort of clarify how you can move forward, it's basically allowing for smaller setbacks, smaller, you know, requirements that sort of acknowledge a hardship. But it doesn't exempt the developer from meeting traffic requirements or zoning requirements and those types of things. So ultimately, I think it comes back to, what is it zoned, right? And you might want to think about, you know, these, there are some parcels that are not developable, right? And sometimes you've got to say, this is something maybe the parish needs to purchase, or they need to donate, it needs to be part of the right-of-way, or, you know, and so what you're describing sounds like more like, more like that kind of situation. Yeah. Which is more, I think, a one-on-one, like, you know, owner comes to parish and says, what can I do with this? And parish says, not very much. Let's see what we can make work. It's a great question, though. All right. So substandard lots. The other piece in terms of policy changes or just clarifications, the third one is updating billboard sign standards based on stakeholder and industry feedback. This is an amendment to Chapter 600. If you refer to recommendation number 13, let's see, this is going to be on page... 24. And you'll see here, I know the last time we met with y'all, just to jog your memories, we had these standards in here. And there was a question about why new billboards would be less than the billboards that were being reconstructed. And so what you see here is a consistency between the replacement size of those smaller billboards and the new billboards are consistent with those replacement standards. And if y'all have questions, we do have someone in the audience who's from, you know, within the industry with Lamar that can kind of answer questions about billboard standards. That's much more proficient than this than I am. Does anybody have questions about this item? It's always nice when we circle back, yeah.
Page 26, Section 601E. There are a lot of bulkheads that extend beyond the normal shoreline. So would that eliminate those? Would that eliminate those?
So this is a question about the accessory use standards. These are for boat houses that are permitted in residential districts, so like along the water, right? And I think this gets more at when you go to get permitted with a coastal use permit. There are specific standards about how much bulkheads are allowed to project. And so I think right now, we're not proposing any changes to this standard. But if you're saying that there may be something that's causing a problem, we can look into it further.
Well, all of these shall not be located beyond the established shoreline. Go look around. None of them, they're all beyond the established shoreline. So that verbiage is going to cause some problems, especially with somebody that's trying to build a dock, build a...
And we can make a note of this. Like, I think, like, it's something that we haven't looked into recently, you know, because these are standards that are currently in the code. But I do think what you're referring to, if they exist, then they may have eroded, right? Like, I mean, there may be some erosion that's happening where the bulkheads are becoming further out because the land is eroding. But I think this refers to new boat houses or new bulkheads that are being proposed. But we'll look into it, Mr. Seager, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just as a question, how does that wording relate to our previous line of development code? You know, one-for-one?
I think it's a one-for-one, yeah. I can, we can verify, though.
Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Gaines has a question.
Yeah, so that's, so I wholly agree with my fellow commissioner. Established shoreline is a very vague term because sometimes they're buying lots that have been there for 50 years with no shoreline. And the adjacent bulkheads could be well out beyond what the current shoreline of that lot is, and they want to reclaim that land. So some additional clarification might be. Or, like, if you consider someplace like Lake Shore Estates, where they have very shallow water near, and they want to reclaim or not encroach into the beach on the outside, but they want to reclaim some of the land that was eroded away to establish a deeper section to put a boathouse in or something like that, so...
Yeah, and this is something that, it's not necessarily part of the housekeeping study that we have the items brought to y'all, but it is something that's part of the coastal use permit process. And the state regulates this with the local floodway management, coastal office. And so it's, I think the intent is to try to limit land intrusion or structure intrusions within a river system, right? They don't want things sticking out where the water needs to flow. But we can look into it and see, you know, what's going on there. And if this is something that's coming from the state or something that we're imposing locally.
I understand the bulkhead and the breakwaters, but pilings for docks are all past the established...
Shoreline.
Shoreline.
Yeah.
So...
It's a good catch, look at it. Thank you.
If I can, I just wanted to jump in to clarify what Ross was asking about. This is one-for-one language that was taken out of the old Unified Development Code. So if y'all kind of have issues with it, we'd be more than happy to take a look at it.
I would ask, if possible, based on any kind of vote tonight, we could move forward. We can have any kind of corrections made by the time we get to the council. And we can report back to y'all as well.
I think as long as we're getting, like she was saying, a Corps of Engineers permit, that probably would supersede it anyway. It just, but you just, I think to his comments...
Right, if you're getting the local...
Yeah, if you're just, if you're just including that language in the UDC, that Corps of Engineers permit, you know, that would, that would take care of it.
Yeah, that's no, great comments.
All right. Okay, and then the next ones, I mean, I'm jumping around. But if y'all want to go from the top to the bottom, we could do that, too. If, since some of y'all haven't seen this report and isn't, you know, like, I want to make sure it's easy for y'all. So why don't we adapt and kind of go from the start? We can skip over the ones we've already went over. That way, we're not spending half the meeting bouncing around. Because the rest of these amendments are very much corrections or clarifications. They all kind of fall within the same bucket. All right, so for the first one, on page one of your appendix, this is clarifying the difference between a single and two-family dwelling. When more than one full kitchen is constructed with a single dwelling, that includes a breezeway. And to streamline those terms related to subdivisions and mini warehouses. So you'll see amendments to the definition of single family. So you have this sort of characterized by more than one full indoor kitchen, right? Or characterized by having no more than one full indoor kitchen, right? And it kind of goes a step further to say, if a single-family dwelling is connected to another structure by a breezeway, and the other structure includes another full indoor kitchen, the dwelling is a duplex or a two-family dwelling. The key here is you've got to have to keep going, right? Like, what do you mean by full kitchen, right? So we add a definition for full kitchen. We also amend the definition for two-family dwellings. So this adds that clarifying language, where it says also includes two structures connected to each other by a breezeway, where each structure contains its own full indoor kitchen, also known as a duplex. If you go to kitchen, you know, you've got these new definitions. It's sort of like, what do we mean by that? Your kitchen definition is any room principally used, intended or designed to be used for cooking or the preparation of food. The presence of a range or oven or utility connections suitable for servicing a range or an oven shall normally be considered as establishing a kitchen. The key here is kitchen can be inside or outside. We don't want to prohibit somebody from having an outdoor kitchen, right? And calling it a duplex. So you kind of have to take another step further and define what is a full indoor kitchen. And this is any kitchen that is fully enclosed within a dwelling and includes a sink, refrigerator, oven, and storage space, cabinets, drawers, et cetera, traditionally associated with preparing and serving food. And these just really help the staff differentiate between, you know, an outdoor poolhouse that has an outdoor kitchen versus two structures where you may rent one and connect it with a breezeway. We're also streamlining standards for subdivisions. So a minor subdivision and a major subdivision, you don't really have terms now that we're referring to re-subdivisions. You just have minor and major. So we're just removing this term re-subdivision.
Where are you, Ross?
I'm on page two of 33, and I'm referring to this red struck-through text. All right. And you can kind of see, we removed the term re-subdivision, but we clarify that the word subdivision includes that, what is traditionally known as a re-subdivision. So including the, this is the blue text in the word subdivision that's being added, the readjustment of lot lines, a further division of an existing subdivision or a portion thereof, or combining two or more lots of existing record. All right? Within, this also is clarifying that a mini warehouse is the same thing. They're synonymous with a self-storage warehouse. And this kind of happened in the old code where one was defined, but then one was regulated. We're just saying the definition refers to the regulation, they are the same. Any questions about amendments to definitions? Great. Within chapter 100, we're also reincorporating alternative members to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustments. These just were left off, right? So these alternates. And so they're being pulled back in. You can see that bold and blue text. The council did adopt an emergency ordinance to make amendments to these that we're trying to be consistent with. The only difference between the recommendations that are before you and the proposed, or the approved amendments with the council is actually at the top of page three, where it says the parish council by resolution shall have the unilateral and exclusive right to appoint nine members and one alternate. The council ordinance says two alternates, and we are asking y'all to consider an amendment to make your recommendation consistent with what they have just recently passed. So that would say instead, two alternates.
And it would remove the blue on number two at the bottom of page two from the parish president for one alternate?
Yes, it would. It would, it would also delete the blue, right, exactly, thank you, Ross. It would delete the, the blue and one alternate from the parish president, number two. So just consolidate both alternates as council appointments instead of one each being made by the parish president and the council. Any questions about that? All right, great. Number three looks at clarifying use standards. This again is continuing to sort of thread the needle with these mini warehouses as being the same as warehousing and self-storage. We mentioned this policy piece already where we're just clarifying that if you look at number six on the bottom of page three, this is that new clarifying text, where no more than 50% of the total square footage of a lot may be used as an accessory outdoor storage yard and shall be screened from public view on the front side and rear by a 100% opaque eight-foot-high fence, consisting of wood, solid masonry, concrete, or other material as approved by the planning department. Okay. Any questions on this one? All right. These are all like, I think, very, you know, reasonable clarifications and corrections. So just let me know if there's anything that rings a bell. The next number, number four, is sort of tying together some of the standards within the UDC with how permits are issued. So this wasn't really incorrect, but it was not as clear as it could be. And so what you see here is just really some small amendments that acknowledge, you know, that you're including a completed form, including the sheriff's job resignation form, verifying compliance with these standards, including a completed state highway approval form. We did have to make number 12, this was a holdover. We used to have an administrative permit, but now that now refers to development plan and review. So number 12 makes that reference correct to development plan and review approval. Number 13 better refers to the actual section of the UDC that deals with land clearing standards instead of just, you know, generally referring to land clearing permits. And the same thing for number 14. It sort of very specifically refers to the signage standards in the UDC instead of just generally referring to needing a sign permit. This is really just improving wayfinding within chapter 300. Just keeping in mind, when applicants are in chapter 300, they're usually just building a building, right? So they're not having to go through the full plan and review. So this is just kind of helping them navigate the rest of the code as it may be applicable to their application. Any questions? All right. Number five is amending chapter 400 zoning. This is to add those minimum standards to screen landscape and public utility sites. We did talk about this one already. So if y'all are comfortable with this amendment, we can kind of jump through to the next one.
I did have a question.
Sure.
Do you guys want to? I noticed in the previous comments that you specific, you specifically determined the amount of opacity for a fence, but several of the comments here don't determine that. Do you want to specifically define that?
Yeah, so front yard fences typically have to be a certain height, right? So they have to maintain some clear vision. I mean, Ross, do you want to maybe?
Yeah, this is, this is.
Yeah, this is different.
Public utilities, so you just say opaque fence.
Right.
The other comment said 100% opaque fence. I'm just asking if you want to have that consistency, or do you?
It's not a bad edit.
We'll look into it, let you know.
Yeah, I think, because like, is the intent that it's wood? Or that it's like, because they might want to put up wrought iron, which is not 100% opaque, right? So you can see through it.
I just didn't know what the.
Sometimes they use like slats or like this green mesh material.
Yeah.
That's not 100% opaque, but it still provides that.
It's like 90.
So it's like, we'll look into it.
Mr. Chairman.
And I think y'all let us know what you think, right? I mean, ultimately, y'all are going to see these requests, and they're, you know, these are subject to plan and development review, or you won't, right? They'll go through planning commission. I mean, they'll go through planning department review.
So one of the reasons why we didn't say completely opaque fence is throughout the years, we've found that it's preferable to leave the fence, you know, the gate open and not completely opaque. Unfortunately, it happens quite often that when it's a completely opaque fence, people throw their trash over the fence. And I'm sorry about the situation, but this is a situation that we've had to deal with for many, many years, and I've received many complaints. You know, when a technician has to go to the site to try to do maintenance, and when you open the gate and you find everything that you can imagine, I'm going to let you, I'm going to leave it there, then it's, so when you have a little bit of just a gate that is not opaque, people have less of a tendency to use it as a dump site.
Really good context, thanks Helen. And y'all can see too, just we're renumbering. It looks like a lot of changes, but we're, just because we're adding standards for this, it kind of bumps everything down. And so there's some markups in the charts and the references to standards, just to keep everything correct. If you look on page seven, you'll see number six, kind of towards the bottom. And it refers to amendments to chapter 400 zoning, specifically to add those standards to the, the public utility sites. This is really just to drop it in to each of those zoning districts. So it's just referring to the standards we were just looking at to remove this, this reference to the natural area requirement that's no longer applicable in the S1 and S2 districts. You may recall in the original UDC, there was a natural area like bonus that you could get. You could reduce some lot density in those two districts. But when we added the major subdivision incentives, you don't need that anymore. They're, they work universally across all the districts. So we're just really striking through those. And then updating those minimum standards for use standards, clarifying accessory uses, and decorative ponds are permitted in residential zoning districts. And so you'll see here in the permitted use chart, you know, we kind of clarify when we talk about agriculture. This is on page eight of 33. It's the blue text in the chart. We're talking about stables and kennels. This was just something that when we started looking at agricultural and decorative ponds, we realized we could add a little bit more specificity to the charts so people knew what that was referring to. If you look down on the same page, number two, it, it kind of talks about permitted uses that are allowed in residential districts. And what we're doing here with this blue text is we're scratching out a very general reference to accessory uses that are permitted in the UDC. And we're replacing it with a very specific reference to where accessory uses in residential districts are regulated. So people can immediately go find those boat slip standards, home office standards, if they're in their district. They're not going, oh, where, where does that go? Right? And these amendments are consistent throughout all of the residential districts. So page nine is doing the same thing. It's kind of dropping these clarifications related to agricultural ponds and stables, referring to these public and private utility facility standards and updating references to how and where accessory uses in residential districts are regulated. It's just bouncing from one district to the next. So these are all the same. So you can go through page nine, page 10, 11, right? And you'll see on page 12, you'll see that deletion right in the middle of the page. That's the S1 deletion of the, except for when natural area incentive is applied. The same deletion is at the bottom of page 12 and applies to the S2 districts, that we don't need those anymore. And like Ross was saying, you can keep going all the way through page 15. All of these edits are consistent throughout all the residential districts. That's the single and two-family and multifamily.
And then number seven starts on 15.
That's right. Number seven starts on 15, and this deals with the commercial districts. This is removing those hotels that in the general commercial district, G1, GC1 and GC2, and the HC1 highway commercial district, and just really updating those references. And so you'll see in the chart, those peas that are next to hotel are scratched out. And you'll see like in the use standards, these are just blue because we're correcting them based on things moving around. We added standards for public use facilities. And y'all have your uses in the chart and in the list. So we've got to sort of scratch it out of the chart, but we've also got to scratch it out of the lists. And so if you keep going on page 17, you'll keep seeing those changes. Same with 18. You'll see just like little use standards updated. Y'all have any questions? Tell me if I need to slow down. I can. Number eight on page 18 looks at those industrial zoning district regulations and is adding back in these commercial excavation land use activities within the I1 and I2 districts, subject to plan and development review. So you'll see at the bottom of page 18, those blue peas with the asterisks next to excavation commercial. And just remember that asterix means it's got to be reviewed by the planning director, planning department, before they get a permit. Make sure they meet minimum standards. And then it's also added into the actual district permitted use lists themselves. And that's what you're going to see on page 19 and on page 20. All right, any questions about the industrial, commercial excavation? Cool. We're on page 20, number nine. This actually is just a standard that's moving from one place to another place. So the planting requirements in the planned corridor districts and the last housekeeping edit, we added this standard, but we added it to a chart, and it universally applied across all districts. And that was not the intent. We realized it after the fact that we misunderstood the direction. And so we're really just moving it from the chart and putting it in the one district where it applies. And so this language is not different. It's clarified and it's just moved. And it says specifically that in, within the planned corridor district, the street planting area shall contain a minimum of one class A tree for every 600 square feet of the street planting area, and one class B tree for every 400 square feet of the street planting area. And further, you know, they need to follow the type A landscape requirements. And for lots that are greater than 150 feet in depth, the street planting area shall include one additional foot for every additional 10 feet in depth, right? So you got to go deeper if your lot is deeper. Okay? And you'll see the chart in just a couple pages where we strike through the same language. So you're going to see that movement in these amendments. On page 21, we talked about these, the clarifications to legal non-conforming lots. Do y'all want to talk about this anymore? Y'all feeling comfortable with the text that's proposed on page 21? Good, all right. If you look on page 22 on number 11, this is that language that we were talking about with the little asterix that's under 25 feet. This is the language that's being relocated more specifically to the planned corridor area or district. Okay? Number 12, these are the standards that are reincorporating bulletin board signs and monument signs that are at the entrance of a residential subdivision or mixed-use subdivision. These are adapted from your old code. They were just left out, right? We realized that when we started looking at the signed code more closely. And so they're reincorporated and they're kind of streamlined with the new code. But they really are not significantly different. And I don't know, Helen, if you want to add anything. I feel like, any, great. All right. Because I think everybody was, there was no intent to get rid of these types of signs with the UDC. Okay, any questions about these standards? Okay. If you look on page 24, you'll see number 13. These are those billboard standards that we updated based on y'all's previous feedback. We did talk about this already, so if y'all are okay, I'm going to keep going. On page 25, you'll see number 14. This is further clarifying where accessory use standards are. So like, this was something that we, we looked at the residential districts and said, oh, you know, we really need to make sure people know where to go to see that accessory uses are permitted in residential districts. But then when we looked at 600, we thought, you know, we could further clarify this as well. And so we separated this into two sections, accessory building and uses. So you'll see that new text clarifying it. And then you'll see if you go to page 26, we changed out this additional standards for specific accessory uses. We took that out and just said, no, these are accessory use standards themselves. So it's a separate section, and this is what each of the residential districts now refers to directly. Okay? All right, and you'll see some minor amendments to page 29, just clarifying, you know, that not all of y'all's roads are public, right? And so we're sort of making some generalizations here to avoid hiccups in administering the code. And this is in, let's see. These are clarifying their, your minor subdivision amendments. So hold on, I'm actually skipping, yeah, sorry about that. I skipped number 15. This is on page 28, where we're looking more closely at the minor subdivisions. An approval process is to clarify those minor subdivision application review and public hearing requirements. And you'll see here, we took that minor subdivision of less than 10 lots having a combined acre of two, combined area of two acres or less. The state law is written this way, right? You can have up to 10 lots that are no more than two acres in area. Given the size of lots in St. Tammany Parish, it seems, it seems out of scale. And so working with the parish, this was reduced down to five lots having no more than two acres. And what this process is intending to do is facilitate your minor re-subdivisions where you're just moving lot lines, right? You're not really creating, increasing density. Okay? All right, and you can see just further, this is again, kind of making sure it's clear to applicants that this isn't really the division of lots. This is really the adjustment. This is on page 29. You'll see that strike through of the word division, shifting to the adjustment, dropping it down from 10 to five lots, and then further clarifying that it does in fact involve the combination or amendment of existing legal lots of record to increase conformance with the minimum width depth or area requirements of this code. The nice thing for y'all is you will not see these applications because they're administratively approved. So it's good, right? They're small, they're minor. And then finally, on 16, you'll see, these are those clarifications that just say, you know, the planning director is allowed to make minor modifications when they meet this minimum criteria for concept subdivision plans and for final plats. And then we went over everything on 31. This is the other element of the non-conforming lot standard that refers to chapter 500. And then on page 32, this is direct verbatim from your old code, drops back into the new code. These are fill materials prohibited within 200 feet of a drainage waterway. This was not intended to be left off, so it's really being reincorporated directly from the old code into the new UDC. Any questions? How we doing on time? Perfect.
Commissioner, I know it's a lot of information. Yeah. But appreciate y'all listening to us for the last hour, making these or requesting that y'all make these common sense edits for the code moving forward. It's only been in implementation since the second, so we're going to be finding these things for the next few months. And appreciate y'all helping move the amendments forward. But if you have any questions, please let us know. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If somebody have a question.
Uh, our.
Actually, I was going to make a motion to accept the, I want to make sure I say this correct.
First, you want to do a motion to amend?
To amend.
To be consistent with the off-the-floor emergency.
To be consistent with?
The off-the-floor.
Off-the-floor parish council.
Emergency ordinance.
Emergency ordinance. Sorry, I had to get clarification, that's why I was waiting.
Okay.
Have the chairman recognize you, but.
Okay, Carl, you have some comments?
Uh, yes, actually I do. And if I could, I, like I think the same thing happened last time, is I would ask that you not make a motion now, but wait until the same item, number nine, is going to come up at the end of the planning meeting. And I would ask that you wait until then, at which time I would hope that, and I certainly have some comments that I would like to make. And instead of taking the time now, if you would, just not take any action right now, but wait until and take action as the planning commission at the, at the end, and then the zoning commission at, also the end. I believe you can, you can do that, thank you.
Was item number nine, Carl? Was item number nine?
Is, was this, this item, was, was?
No specific item then you was talking about here.
Right.
Right, no, 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 not, not here, no.
Right, not in the actual representative.
No, actually, and it's billboards that I want to talk about again, which apparently.
Let's do it now. What do y'all want to do, y'all want to do it now or later?
We have some people that are here representing the billboards as well.
Yeah, knock it out.
I think they want to.
We have representatives here from the industry.
Okay. We have some folks here from Lamar, I think, that would like to speak. We have some folks here from Lamar, I think, that would like to speak.
Do you want to go? Carlo, do you want to finish? Chairman, is that okay if you find Carlo finishes time?
Here, I can take the money away. So you can use the podium. There you go. You're good.
I'm good.
You know, I can understand why some of the commission members have had, I know I had trouble understanding some of the, some of the things, and I know I didn't get it as quickly as you did on here. But anyway, and just looking at, most of the changes, I think, I don't have a problem with. But the, the real problem I have is going back to, to the billboards again. Last time I brought up the issue of the billboards, the comment was made that the billboards were taken from Jefferson Parish regulations. Now, and let's, and specifically, I'm looking at page 2433, number 13, size of billboards, and it says, "New billboards shall be a maximum," and they strike out 300, and it says 378 square feet in area. Now, I believe that's because of what's in Jefferson Parish. And then I would hope that you would leave it at 300, 300 square feet. There's no need, I don't believe, to have bigger billboards in St. Tammany Parish. Then number two, or double I, it says, "Replacement of billboards, of existing billboards that were constructed prior to August 2nd, 2024, that are 400 square feet or larger in face area may be replaced at a size up to," and then they have 400 scratched out, and have 672 square feet. Again, I'm assuming the 672 square feet came from Jefferson Parish, but I can't verify that. Billboards with face areas between 399, and then it says to 245, which is scratched out square feet and less, shall be replaced at a size up to, and then 300 is scratched out, 375, 378 square feet. And then the last sentence that was in there previously, it says, "Existing billboards of less than 245 square feet shall be restricted in their current size in the event that they are relocated." Now, I would hope that you would consider, number one, leaving the, the maximum new, new billboards at 300 feet and not go to 378. The replacement billboards, I don't understand if it's been being replaced, why it should be replaced at a higher level than, than what was in for, for the new, for the new billboards. So instead of having the 400, let's keep it at 300. Let's say 300 feet is the maximum. So if you're replacing it, no matter what size it is, then the 300 feet is the maximum size that it can be. So instead of having bigger billboards in St. Tammany Parish, let's keep it at the 300 feet, which is presently the regulation, whether it's a new billboard or a replacement of a, of a billboard. And that's what I would hope that you would consider doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The folks from Lamar, do you want to make a comment?
Aaron, do you want to add? Do you have any comments right now? Mr. Chairman, you mind recognizing Aaron?
We can do that, too.
Yeah, Commissioners, if you wouldn't mind, I just kind of wanted to talk about how the current code reads in conjunction with the old code. So the old UDC, there was a max of 300, but the current proposed code, as was adopted by the Parish Council in December, allows 378 square feet. So, I'm sorry, the new proposed, let me back up. The new, the old land use development code, the new billboards are a max of 300 feet. Right now, they are 300 square feet. We are proposing to up those to 378 square feet to, because they're recognized industry standards in the state of Louisiana and honestly nationwide. As far as the replacements, right now, they read 400 square feet or larger in face area can be replaced at a size up to 400 square feet. We believe that those should be 672 square feet, again, to align with industry standards nationwide. And then where you have the 399 to 245 and less can be replaced up to a size of 300, we believe that if you're allowing new signs to come in at 378, as we're proposing, then the minimum size that a sign should be would be 378. That makes sense to us.
Could you elaborate just what the permitted zones for those particular sizes are? So like, I imagine that the larger ones are next to the interstate. Is there any other areas where the larger ones are permitted?
Can I get back to you?
All right. Let's, let's go to the gentleman there at the bar.
It was, it was just for clarification. My name's Lance Curran, I'm with Lamar Advertising. The, the 300 to the 378, which you commonly see along Interstate 12 right now, is 378 square feet. So we were keeping in line with what is currently there now. The 672 is commonly what you see along Interstate 10, maybe through Slidell and some parts of, of Covington along I-12. So we're not asking for larger signs or anything like that. We're just trying to, to stay in line with what's currently there.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right. Tom Seager?
That was referring to a motion that was made, so I'm going to...
Is that motion still active?
Yes, yes. A motion to amend the language so it's consistent with the parent, with the council's...
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we have a second on that. Robert Trancoso?
Yes, sir. I guess I'll get to the intent of doing this. We're talking about maintaining a consistency of signage that's already in place. We're not trying to reduce the size of signs to make it more aesthetically appealing or safe for traffic and signage and people that are traveling along the interstate. Because, and I'm referring specifically to the replacement size. You're talking about a substantial increase from 400 square feet, 200 to 272 feet more in size of billboard. Now, sure, there's billboards that are that size, but what's the intent? Where, where are we moving the needle better? Where are we making it better? To where, is bigger boards better? Is that what we're saying? Or we're saying that we should limit that along the interstate landscape instead of increasing it? And that's just my point. I understand we have a motion and we need to vote on it, but again, this was brought up before. I understand the intent, and I understand what you're saying, sir. But it just seems to me we're not moving anything forward here. All we're doing is maintaining the status quo, and I don't think that's really what we should be doing. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Okay, Aaron?
Your own. Okay. So for new billboards, I think we are taking into account, you know, to possibly limit those to a smaller size of 378, which is still industry standard. It's recognizing that there needs to possibly be a size allocation to these new billboards. But it's also allowing the existing billboards to have some vested rights in the parish, where you were following the old regulations, now you're under a new regulation, but you have those legal nonconforming uses that are generally allocated a one-to-one. I think we're just trying to come into compliance with industry standards as far as the new billboard, or the existing billboards go.
If I was, if I may respond, if I had a mini storage company, which I do have, I want more mini storage buildings. I want less restrictions, and I want to do whatever I want to do. Because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about an industry standard that maybe needs to change. That's all I'm saying. I just, to me, the landscaping of the interstate scenic attributes of it are, are important. And I think that, you know, the 672 is just kind of strong. I, I understand the vested interests. I also understand the economic aspects of it relative to them. But it's almost like if a hurricane comes and blows it down, they'll be putting up 672 square feet of signs, where there were 400 before. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
Okay.
Commissioner Gaines, I'd just like to respond to your question. I just wanted to clarify that the new UDC is the same as the old code I'm used to using. There's no specific zoning classification in which a billboard is or isn't allowed, but there are specific location criteria. So it has to be located within 200 feet of the highway right of way, and then it's not allowed closer than 500 feet of a residential zone district where it is abiding the highway.
Well, there's a cap on the number.
And there is a cap on the number of billboards in the parish, which we are not anywhere near that cap.
So like, 190 in Covington, is that a highway?
Yes.
And it would, but so, so we could, we could have 600, 672 square foot billboards down 190 in the middle of Covington?
As long as it meets the location requirements.
So, I mean, I have to kind of agree with my colleague here. I think that in some zones, there's, there's probably a permitted use for that, like along the interstate, like was, was brought up. But, you know, inside the town centers and stuff like that, I just don't think that that's a appropriate area.
So just remember, um...
Sure.
Those, as Lance reminded, would be 378, but also, too, the code has been existent with this language, other than the size, for 15 years.
Sure.
And those have not been developed up and down 190 due to their lack of being able to adhere to all the requirements, needs to be placed on there. Correct.
Yeah, there's also another regulation in the state. No billboard or sign shall be permitted along parish roads unless that sign is parallel to and within 200 feet of any state or federal highway. So, I mean, there's a lot to consider with these location requirements.
Did you have any other comments? The gentleman from Lamar?
I did not, unless y'all had other questions for me.
I do.
Now?
Are we saying industry has two sizes of signs, the little ones and the big ones?
There are two very common sizes in the industry, right? 370...
Are there other common sizes?
I'm sorry?
Are there other common sizes?
The, the, yeah, there's, I guess it depends on where you look. But yeah, there's, there's the 378 square feet and the, and the 672 square feet are the most two common sizes that you would see along the interstate.
I guess my question is, like my fellow commissioners, if we have, and this is for staff, my fellow commissioners, if we have, I guess I don't understand why 378 is sufficient throughout the parish. We could let the 400 square foot signs stay 400 feet, but why do we need to jump higher? Have, I don't know of a billboard I wasn't able to see. I mean, are they, they're not big enough already? I'm just, I'm just asking the reasoning behind, was 400 the old standard and now the new standard is 672?
Well, I think, like Lance had mentioned, and just for context, 378 is what you would see on I-12, the little bit bigger billboards on I-10, well, it's 672. You know, it's, it's just what's there, and we modified our regulations to match that, and that's pretty much how I can explain it.
But, but what's there is not 672, is it?
Correct.
It is?
Yes. So along I-10, let's just use I-10 and Slidell as a reference, the majority of those signs are, are 672 square feet, so there's no additional square footage. If a hurricane comes through and one comes down, it would just go right back to the same size as this, as...
Okay, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, sorry.
So how did that happen? If, if, I thought we were, you were telling us the old code compared to the new, but the old code had 672? Or somehow we missed that and the big billboard showed up?
The, the sizes remain the same or pretty close, even when we changed from ordinance 523 to the new ordinance. The only thing that we did is basically just adjust the regulation regarding the location of the signs.
So the city's not altering regulations?
The regulations always allows upsizing where you're replacing. If you look at like the, I don't want to say old code, new code, because I think we're getting confused, but the code we used two years ago said. You could always do a replacement if you, if your square footage of your sign was under 400, up to 400, then you could replace up to 400. If it was 245 to 399, you could replace up to 300. So in some cases, it downsized, and in some cases, it allowed you to go higher. There was no variable necessarily. It was just like, if you fall within this bracket, then this is what you can replace to. And I think that's what we're proposing in the new proposed UDC, we're just upping those numbers a bit to be consistent with the standard.
So right now, all new billboards will be no larger than 378.
As proposed to you tonight.
And all replacement billboards can be up to 672.
If you're 400 square foot or greater, then you can go up to 672. So for instance, if you're 700 square foot, then you, you still have to be at the 672 number. And then if you're 399 square foot or less, then you can go to 378. So we're sticking with that same variable scale. Some will win and some will lose, but we believe that we're being consistent with what we see across the board in Louisiana.
Okay. Thank you. I think that makes sense.
Okay. Any other comment? You just turned off. That's good. Trancoso, did you have some more? Uh, no, sir. Okay. Seager, did you have any other comment? Okay, we've got everything cleared, so we'll have a motion and a second. Speak. Okay? Go for it.
Uh, this is the staff. With all the regulations about billboards, so actually limits the location where these billboards can go. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second.
Motion to amend the code of ordinances carries.
And we have one abstaining, right?
One abstention, yes.
Okay. Now, you had to comment?
Were you adjourned? Yep, make a motion.
No, I need to make another motion.
I make a motion to approve and recommend.
In a second. Motion to what?
Approve and recommend.
Okay. All right. And so we need to vote on that. We, we had a second, right?
We have a second.
Okay.
Motion to approve and recommend the amendments carries.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. We, yes, we need a motion to adjourn this particular meeting, and we'll...
A second.
We'll...
Second.
Bring the other one up in probably about 10 minutes. Okay? Thank y'all and, and the public. You might not understood what all we were doing, but it has to do with the ordinances and doesn't, may not have anything to do with a particular case tonight, but we're ready to call that in about 10 minutes. Thank y'all.